Call to order the regular city council meeting of February 28, 2022. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Thank you. You now, please, join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everybody. Welcome. And I want to say this is our first meeting back in our old city council area up here in over two years. So hopefully, it's a good sign. The numbers today I saw were under 700 in the state. So hopefully, we're in the right direction. So that's a good thing. And welcome our Assistant City Manager tonight, Nick Banda, who's in for our City Manager, who is ill tonight, so we hope he has a speedy recovery. Next on to public comment, scheduled, non-scheduled presentation. Is there anybody? Come on up to the.
This is for the brunch house.
Okay. Are there any com-- anybody wants to speak, Brian? Anybody?
I am not seeing anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation of the draft wage on compensation report. Nick, are you going to do that?
Um.
Or is that Blaine?
Do we have approval of the minutes?
Yeah, where's the minutes?
Yeah, I think the minutes.
Oh, yeah. The minutes.
I don't even have the draft.
Well, we're still on public comment, according to my.
I don't see that on my.
Yeah, where is that?
Oh, I have a different one.
Yeah, so after they have the approval of the minutes.
Oh, they say, I think you have a different one.
Okay. Doesn't matter. How can you, how can you print it off and it be different?
That was a surprise.
Yeah, okay. We have approval of the minutes, a consideration of the minutes for the regular meeting of February 14, 2022.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion. Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
So there was a note in the minutes that we're still looking for the detailed verbatim minutes, and it's been a month. So I was a little disappointed that we don't have those yet.
I'm working on them. They're up over 10 pages right now, so.
So question, is that just on the one meeting, or?
Just on that one conversation, correct.
Okay, so, because the request was also to include the prior meeting as well, so we have contacts going to.
Request, correct.
Okay, right.
So there were two, correct?
I'm just hearing now from council, so that would be from January tense meeting, when they had the conversation.
Correct. So the first, first time we talked about it, we wanted to have that for historical context, and then the actual decision we made on the 24th, was that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes. Thank you. Next is old business and table items. First is a City of Rochester policy regarding the use of neoticonoids.
Neonicinoids.
Practice that. Whatever. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I think Mr. Crot's going to handle that. We've been working with City Beautiful Commission and Marilyn Trent to talk about, I think, the right thing ecologically for the community, and I think she was very excited, and Jeff can confirm that, about the fact that we're willing to make a statement and live by that as we use our applications, et cetera, within our, the things that we do through the DPW. So Jeff, I know you talked to her.
Yeah, at a meeting, a city council meeting, a number of months ago, Marilyn Trent came and requested, she made a presentation, and at the end of the presentation, made a request for the city to adopt a policy to not use neonicotinoids. And so the, the, the direction, I reviewed the meeting from that, and the direction was to come back with a policy. And so I put together this draft policy based on essentially the request that Ms. Trent had at that meeting. I did talk with DPW Director Patrick Ryan regarding this, to make sure that this wasn't going to be an issue for DPW to comply with. The idea back then was that it wasn't, this wasn't going to be an issue because the city doesn't use these materials anyway. So once we put that together, we did, the city did pass it on to Ms. Trent, who looked at it and without change, and said, "Thank you." This is what, essentially, this is what she's looking for, and we believe it to be a good policy. So the action item today would be to, if the city council is satisfied with this policy, is to move it, is to pass it.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion, Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to express my support for this policy. This is not something that we're currently using in the city, but I feel like it makes a statement that we are committed to our native plant health, as well as the health of bees and other insects, as well as our personal health, too, because we are making a statement not using this type of insecticide in the community. So this is really a public health issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of this also. However, I was, would hope that maybe we could define what a neonicotinoid is. I'm on Google right now, and it says there are five pesticides. I'm not even going to pretend to try to read these, but perhaps we can add the list of those into the attorney, City Attorney Crot that you've developed, and then have that, so that residents know which ones we're referring to, because we just talk about neonicotinoid without defining which ones they are.
I will be happy to. In fact, what I'll probably do is connect with Ms. Trent, because I think she's done all the research and can probably give me a list that's a type of insecticide versus brand names. So I think maybe what I'll do is ask her for what would be a good descriptor of a list that would capture what people would know, recognize it as.
Thank you.
Further comments? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you to Marilyn Trent for her hard work and leadership on this. Next, we are on to a public hearing, and we were going to have the public hearing tonight to adopt the master plan, but because the planning commission postponed it for a meeting, we are now going to be postponing this to a later meeting. So we will not be having the. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, sir. If there's an opportunity for the city to print off the 134 pages that we might pick up, I've, I've already printed my own copy, but I think it would be helpful if we could, don't have to be delivered to our house, but you could print them off and let us pick them up. That'd be great.
Yes, sir.
I don't want a printed copy.
No paper?
Please don't give me a paper.
Okay. I will take a paper.
Okay. I'm all set. You need to sit down? Okay, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I'm good, too.
What does that say about us, Mr. Sage?
You mean the elders here?
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's what it says. But it doesn't, though, right?
No, it's good to have for reference. You can't reference everything online, and at least you can keep a hard copy forever.
Thank you for that, Ms. Peterson.
I'm going to wait until it's approved, and then I'm going to get the hard copy.
Exactly.
Okay, next on to legislative deliberation is a renewal of the parking agreement at 226 Walnut for the Rochester Brunch House. Mr. City Manager, Assistant City Manager.
It doesn't matter tonight. It is what it is. So, in your packet, I wrote a pretty detailed report that explained the situation with the Brunch House folks. Liz is here, Liz and I are men here, the owner, and they all, her and our men, her husband are also the owners of St. 1881. That's the building, the former church that's being renovated, and they've been busy at it, but I'm sure Liz can talk a little bit about the timeframe, obviously challenges through the pandemic here. So back then, what happened was, two things happened. We'll go back to the Brunch House first. They had gone through the planning commission, and we worked out a deal to put a solarium on their outside dining area, a glass enclosure that would be used year-round. We worked it all out. I think that needed two more parking spaces because it now became a permanent part of the structure. They were not able to work that out with the building owner, even though he was part of the whole process. It got kind of wonky. Bought a property line, and the guy at the Chapman house, so they never built that. But being the good stewards that they are, they wrote that first check before they even knew they weren't going to use it. So obviously, they didn't use any parking for a solarium that never got built. And so that's just a fact. We'll just leave it at that. Then when St. 1881 came in, our ordinance, the way it's written, says that before you get a building permit, they hadn't even applied for a building permit on the, on the solarium room, remember that, but they did apply for a permit for St. 1881. In order to do that, you had to make that first year's payment. So they worked with city council, we got an agreement to make a 10-year agreement, they made that first payment, and then the pandemic hit, and they got through over a year, almost two years, didn't make that second payment. I'm going to call it, Liz, dumb luck, maybe, but we didn't, that wasn't done on purpose necessarily. It was like, we're not using your parking, so we're not going to write that second check. Well, what that did legally was kick in the agreement, it nullified the agreement, so they would technically have to come back and ask. Since that time, city council took away that disincentive and dropped that price from $7,500 to $1,000. I know we talked about, anybody that was in the system before, we weren't going to take a look back, right, and give them credit, but this, this doesn't, this no longer exists as an agreement. So I called and said, "We've got to go back to council and ask for a new agreement." Good for you, Erin, your favorite's $1,000. So I'm going to let Liz, if you will, Mayor, come up and explain that. And they'd ask for possibly an agreement to get credit for what they've paid, staff, we talked about that, staff, we don't have a problem with that because they haven't used the parking at all, and they did follow the rules. So we're okay with the request. So in a sense, it almost is a wash, because now the new payment is $5,000. They would already have a credit of six, so they wouldn't technically have to write it anymore, but we still need an agreement that this council approved, they're paying Lou, that they would have fully paid, if that makes sense. So, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, Liz wants to.
Welcome.
Well, I feel honored to be at your guys' first meeting.
There you go.
Thank you.
All for you, right?
It's been two years of this, like, living in a strange, like, Twilight Zone, but good thing I got a baby out of it.
Right.
That's a good, that's a good thing.
It's a great thing.
Yes.
Steve's like, "Oh."
That's awesome.
Okay.
So, if you want to talk a little about where you're at with St. 1881 timeframe and what's going on?
So we're hoping to get things going, like, I want to say, like, mid-spring, early summer, but as everybody here knows and the world knows, everything is on backorder. Everything is taking months and months and months and months to even, you know, to even get an answer. It's, like, impossible. So we've gotten most of the main things done, and now it's just like the little, that, we just have to get the little things done, like the tables and the chairs and the, and the little things that are left undone. We need to wrap those up, but we're having such a hard time getting people in, getting people, you know, giving us prices, and, but we're looking, that's our goal. So we're really pushing hard to get, get it open by, by summer. So my husband is like, I don't even know if we should even give it, like, you know, give ourselves an opening date, just by how everything is so, like, up in the air. But I think we'll get it done, so, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it, as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Nick?
If I may, I was just talking to Jeff, sorry for that. What we'll do is we'll draft an agreement so that there's terms, so that they're covered down the line, because now that runs with the land, right? So we want to make sure it says "paid in full," and then, and then we're both covered on both ends, if that's okay.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Assistant City Manager. So we discussed this both at the planning, or at the parking committee and at council, and made that decision not to grandfather anyone in, but I'm not looking this as grandfather opportunity, but we should formally say that this, so, there is a $1,000 deficit, right? I mean.
They didn't ask for that money back? I mean, we had, we had money, we had cost in doing the administration, so I was pretty straight with our.
So they've already paid, so we wash it. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, of course.
All right. I'm good.
I mean, if you want to give me $1,000, I'll pay for it.
For diapers.
Yeah, hello. Diapers are real expensive.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you. I'd just like to add that I believe, based on the history of this business owner, that this new business will bring in a lot more money to the parking fund as more people be coming, parking in our parking system. So I think it will end up being a positive for the parking fund.
I agree. Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. That's essentially what I wanted to say as well. I was just at the Brunch House on Sunday with my girlfriends, and we had a fabulous time. It's a real gem in this community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So no, I wanted to just say thank you for hanging in there, because I know it's not been easy. It's probably one of the hardest things to do right now, is even start a business and then have this happen, to where you can't. I mean, that's really difficult, so thank you for staying, staying with it.
Of course. I mean, I love this town. I mean, obviously, we're, you know, we're opening another business. We live here, we're going to raise our kids here, hopefully, so we're just, we're happy to be a part of, you know, such a great community and great people, so we're glad to be a part of the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one clarification to the motion, just because part of what's happening here is money that was deposited for the Brunch House is, what you're doing is they're asking you to credit that to the St. 1881, which is, I just want the record to reflect that that's, that's where the money's going. So Brunch House isn't going to end up getting a credit for spaces, because they can use that money for St. 1881. And so that money is just going to be transferred to that account, that's if I understand correctly.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just make sure that that's captured in the, in the agreement.
Right, because, if I may, Mayor, it's, because that never took place anyhow.
Correct.
So, yeah, understandable.
But under the agreement, they would just, they would have just lost that money. So what they're asking for is, don't make us lose that money, use that to apply to our, the new $1,000 space cost.
Well, I guess, Mayor, if I may, so I guess that brings, raises the question, though, so if somebody goes to do that, and that, you know, you have to pay that upfront, and the agreement falls apart, like it did on that, why do we not just give it back to them?
Because there's cost involved, then?
Yeah, and didn't ask, unfortunately, didn't even know, when Marcy goes through this once a year, and she brought to our attention, it's like, I called, and like, well, we had to do that, didn't we? Not on the Brunch House, because you never pulled a permit, and, so that's, that's never happened before, probably won't happen again, quite frankly, so.
Okay.
We audit for this normally?
Correct.
Okay.
And this one's, these are a little different, not different, but these took advantage of the installment plan.
Right.
Because normally, if they were just going to buy, because some have said, "We'll just buy the spaces," and then they, and the city doesn't ever bill them again.
Right.
But in this case, there, this, these two and a couple other ones, they had installment agreements. That's why the full amount wasn't paid upfront, just that first of the 10-year payment. So it was, they didn't pay for all the money. They just paid, had paid for just the initial one that was due with the agreement when they submit that, so.
If I may, remember, like, Boss Barber's a good example, so they are operating. If they stop, then the owner of the building has the right to keep making the payments, so he keeps the credit, or she keeps the credit with them, versus with the business. In this case, on St. 1881, they owned the building, but on the Brunch House, they didn't. So, because if they, if they would have, if they would have pulled the permit and asked for this, we would have had to go to the business owner and ask him, but there was, they didn't do that, so it made it a little cleaner, if you will, so, a little weird, but.
So is there a process, then, for that, now moving forward, for someone who is leasing like that, because we just held on to the money, and you couldn't even do anything? Right?
If they would have asked in that first year for that money back, we would have given it to them, based on the fact that they didn't pull a billing permit. So again, we, I guess we all learned from that.
This works anyhow, but I just, I think that we're missing a piece with that. Yeah, okay.
We'll tighten that up.
So they do get a formal agreement from the city? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it'll be.
Thank you.
Anything further? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Can't wait. When do we get to meet the baby?
I would have brought him with me tonight, but it's cold out.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm like, you know, I'm a new parent, so I'm, I don't take him out in the world.
All right.
Yeah, so.
When is the Brunch, when does the outdoor open up, is your projection?
As soon as this weather, yeah. And I'm, we're so excited we're getting the platforms back, so, but the patio at the new place is going to be gorgeous.
Can't wait.
We're excited, we're excited for it.
Make it happen.
Thank you, just for taking the time.
Have a good evening.
Yep, thanks.
Bye.
Thank you.
Next, we want to report some regular business, first is a recommendation of award of property and liability insurance. Nick?
Yes, so in your packet, there's a memo from Joelle and Haynes, our resource, some resource generalists, and it talks about the, requesting a motion to award the Michigan Municipal League and the city's general property and liability insurance for the period beginning March 15, 2022, to March 15, 2023, using the updated bid specs that the city had, for a total of $164,326. I see some faces I don't recognize up there, and one of them might be a representative from the company. Would that maybe be Cheryl, or Judith? No? That's Judith.
Judith, you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, thank you. Yes, it's me.
Mr. Mayor, if you, maybe Judith could explain a little bit more of the process that we went through?
Yeah, Judith, if you'd like to say something, go ahead. The process.
Did you want me to speak?
Yes, Judith, if you can, just an update about your role in this.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm the account executive from the Michigan Municipal League Insurance Programs. I've been working with the city since you joined the program, and we went through the RFP and responded, and the premium went down significantly this year for a number of reasons, but, and then the dividends are up this year. There is a post-renewal dividend that is coming back to the city after you pay your renewal premium, and that is for $17,680. So the net cost to the city is, is considerably less.
And we, we.
And.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, so, do you have any questions?
Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Judith. So on the packet, we, the bid we received from MML is $164,326, and then you said there's also an additional $17,000 on top of that, which will make it lower, or is that also, is that already baked into that number?
No, the $17,000, $17,680 is a separate dividend return that will come back to the city after you pay your $164,326 renewal premium. So the premium is, is lower. Last year, the dividend to the city was only $11,730, so.
You also.
The dividend is up and the premium is down.
You also mentioned there were some factors that caused us to have a lower premium. What were some of those factors?
Good claim experience is probably the big one. Our underwriter reviewed, and based on your good experience, she brought the premium down.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sage?
You have a 20%, you have a 20% loss ratio, which is excellent.
Very good. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Judith, how many years now consecutive have we gone through MML?
Since, from the liability and property pool, you've been in the MML liability and property pool since March 15 of 2015.
Thank you.
So that's seven years.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. My question's for administration. So the coverage that we're looking at here, I mean, it's listed in our packet, but my question is, has there been any changes in that coverage? General liability, cybersecurity?
I'm not going to tell you that I know that. Councilwoman Judith, do you know the answer to that? I believe there wasn't any.
There wasn't any, any difference in our coverage. The city purchased standalone cyber coverage. The liability and property pool offered a minimal limit, and the city felt that it needed a higher limit for that. So there's a separate policy that comes up for renewal in July for that.
But for this general policy, there's no changes in coverage?
No, no changes in coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may point out, in Joelle's report, it talks about, it results in a $13,503 decrease annually. So for once, it's good news to see something go down, based on experience, so.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, excuse me, to award Michigan Municipal League with the city's general property and liability insurance for the period beginning March 15, 2022, using the updated bid supplied to the city of $164,326.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht?
I will support that with a question.
Support by Councilmember Sage, Councilmember Sage.
Did we do the side insurance policy on the cyber?
Yeah, I think that's come in, and I think she said in May, July, sorry, yeah.
July, yes.
Separate, yep, separate group.
The cost.
What's, what's the cost of the cyber policy? You know?
We, we don't have the renewal quote yet for that. They don't, the carriers usually won't quote that this early. They usually will only quote about 30 to 60 days before the renewal.
You probably have to see what the Russians are going to do.
Fact.
That's actually serious, probably.
Yeah.
Further comment?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. So reviewing these, I mean, neither of these really gave us a lot of information. And this was like something that's supposed to be important, okay? I think it was really lacking to really get the understanding of the question, from the questions that have been asked. But one thing that I, I, I'm not in favor of that, of the motion, and it's because I do not like, the way things have been, I, I do not like having to use attorneys from their pool. Okay, so I, I think there's too many eggs in one basket. And I, whether they're good or not, I just, from optics, it's way too much all in, in one, so.
Pass this on to the city manager. Further discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request to purchase of one freightliner truck. Mr. Nick?
Yes, council. So tonight, our request is to purchase a new 2023 freightliner truck under the COOP purchase contract. The monies for this purchase come from the revolving fund. The purchase total price is $206,075. DPW Director Ryan is on the phone on the Zoom call with us to answer any questions we might have about details.
Very good. Counsel? Councilmember Harrison?
Will we be able to sell our old truck? And if so, what's the expected resale value on that?
$20,000.
Oh, thank you.
Patrick, could you?
Yeah, we, we will sell it using the best method possible. At this point, we believe that the Michigan Governmental Trade Network, or MITN, right now is the best salvage. Of course, because we're talking a long-term construction period, that'll be in about a year, year and a half when we receive the vehicle.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in a previous life, I actually sold this truck. So I know the actual expected eight to 12-month lead time. But it, it brings up another opportunity. So I'd like to see if we could do another open house at the DPW, like we do with the, the fire department. Let kids crawl in on all the trucks and all, all, all the things we have out there that we provide. If, if that, Patrick, is that, would you be good with that?
Yeah, I was saying, one of my pushes when I was interviewing for this position was to have what's normally known as a touch a truck day and a public works open house. Usually it's during Public Works Week. Unfortunately, that's gonna be soon. And we'll not be prepared, but next year, we wanna have a nice soiree where we can bring the community in. They can see the new buildings. They can see the vehicles that they normally just see on the road and learn things, and you'll have some fun times with public works.
Very good. We'll hold you to that, Patrick.
Yes.
More than welcome.
So, support.
Support by Councilmember Sage?
There's no motion.
I don't think we have a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Sage? I guess, yes. Aye?
I'll support the motion.
Support by Mayor Protem Salvia? Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you. Next is the award of $6,000 performance achievement payment to city manager. If you remember, when we did this, I believe we put a 90-day thing to see how the DPW person, if the DPW person stayed, and it appears that the DPW person is here, so. That's where we are. Counsel?
You need an action on that? Motion to approve it? What do we need? A motion to approve the.
I'm unclear on this. We approved it. So it's just simply the timing that triggers the payment. Do we have to re-approve it?
Mr. City Attorney?
So the way the motion is, because I, I went back to take a look to see how that was structured. The structure was that the $6,000 payment would be made upon successful transition of the DPW director. To be, you know, the decision is to be made whether that happened at this point. So the, the, the action item would be to, I guess, make a determination that the successful transition has occurred, it's 90 days has passed, and therefore, that would then trigger the payment. So you're not approving the payment, you're approving the condition. You're saying that condition was met.
Or approving the transfer of time.
Correct.
Alright.
I would make a motion to prove the, the, the time has passed, and therefore, this can be moved forward.
Support?
Motion by the mayor to pro tem, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Further discussion? Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, so, but how do we know it's a successful transition? Because that's, just because somebody's here still doesn't mean it's a successful transition. And I, I, I would like to know more. I can read this, and I understand, you know, how it was put together. But I think there's a lot of things going on that, you know, I'd like to know how that came about. What, what, what is that success?
I could, I could take a shot at it, Mr. Mayor, if you like. So, sorry, I, I talked to the mayor about this while Blaine was off, and a little awkward, but my observation is not been totally smooth. Patrick, I believe, has performed admirably. It's, he was in a difficult spot, so was Mr. Wing, because Mr. Wing was over there and got his, he was used to doing it his way. So I knew there was gonna be a little bit of a, a tough part, so I, I got to be the mediator. And Patrick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not speaking for you, but I think the communication on both sides now is clear. They, maybe the three of us sit down a lot to talk about it, and I think they're on the same page now. And it's imperative that both of them are on the same page. And moving forward, that, that was my plea, and that was our staff's plea, actually, to make sure that we're not fighting each other. We wanna get this done. We, he's capable, he's calm, he's knowledgeable. And it's hard to let things go sometimes, right? And I think that's just part of the process. But for me, I, I see it working, and I see the transitions have been, we're at a good point right now, that we can communicate. Patrick makes his decisions, and then tells the city manager, this is what I'm gonna do, or what I, how I wanna do it, versus how do I do it? I think that was the learning curve. It's like, when you're trying to make your new boss happy, sometimes you say, well, how would you like me to do it? And I'll go do it. Or the city manager likes you to say, this is how I'm gonna do it, and then have that dialogue. And, and that's okay. That's a style. So I believe that we're there. So I, I feel that it's been, we're, for 90 days, 100 days, Patrick said Sunday, or Saturday, I think we're there. I, I'm happy with it, and staff's happy. I can tell you, staff supports this man and the process. And we're gonna continue to make sure we all, as a team, make him successful. And that includes the city manager on board also. That's my opinion.
Very good, thank you.
Oh, he is now able to 100% like really go through the normal day-to-day operation without the assistance of the city manager?
I would say that's fair statement assistance. It's like he brings, each week on Monday, we go over, hey, what we're gonna do this week. To help him stay focused, that Friday, we talk about what we did, not to check on him, but it's helping Patrick. That's a lot of stuff to digest. He hasn't even got to get to the, the good stuff yet. And, and just fighting through, how do I, who's gonna do the day-to-day stuff? Because I don't have an assistant that, yet former's did. We're, we're working our way through that. That's our next step. So, yes, I'd say yes.
So I guess, Mayor, if I may, the next question would be, so, and that's where Patrick would now be the one in charge of all the projects that come through there that need to be taken care with assistance, of course, the normal protocol through the city.
I would say all but the community house, because that one's, at this point, I was so deep into it, but we're starting over kinda. So now Patrick will be involved in that. So the answer is yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Sage?
Mr. Gould?
Councilman Gould, first?
Oh.
I didn't have anything.
Sorry. Uh, thank you. So, I'm kinda alarmed, because I was hoping to hear, okay, so we didn't fire Patrick Warblaine in 90 days. So it's kinda, we pushed this through. Now you're saying that, so is there concern going forward, based on your comments in the transition? There's where I'm unclear. So is, is it an issue of the city is not willing to relinquish control to the department? Or is it the other way around?
I, I would say that we're at a point, to what Councilwoman Peterson asked, that Mr. Ryan is running the department and will seek the normal team advice from all of us to help him do that.
So do we need to formally declare that he runs the department, and the city does not have influence over that? Other than general management?
I think that's just how the policy is right now, so I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Asking only, do I have to declare that?
I, I don't think so.
Further comments? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Now on to receive reports from the various boards and commission. First, a report from the Sister City Committee. Councilmember Albrecht?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was pleased that we had full attendance at our Sister City Committee and welcomed Councilmember Harrison and Councilmember Gould to the Rochester Hills City Hall on February 1st for our Sister City Committee. The attendees from Rochester Hills are Councilmember Walker, Councilmember Mangioli, and Councilmember Blair, who was not there that day. But it was, uh, uh, was pleased to have both Councilmember Harrison and Councilmember Gould, who fully participated and had some very good contributions to the meeting and got caught up to speed. We really talked about two items. One that I will, uh, uh, is later on in the agenda, which is the resurrecting of the Memorial Day Parade and working with Rochester Hills, the City of Rochester, Oakland Township, and the Veterans Tribute. I'll talk about that a little later in the meeting, but we spent a lot of time on that. That had been a topic from, from prior meetings. We then talked about dog parks and the fact that we don't have a lot of room here in the City of Rochester for a dog park. But the, as I wrote here, Rochester Hills also has a lot of interest to create a dog park in the city. So we thought that perhaps we don't, just like the Rochester Hills library is in our city, perhaps the dog park could be in Rochester Hills. So we talked about that. We talked about a way of identifying residents from either community to be able to use the dog park, because you'd have to swipe in to get into the park with your pet. So Rochester residents would be able to go into the Rochester Hills Dog Park, or vice versa, if, if, if it was to come in Rochester. So we really just started that conversation. We are gonna look at where we could do that. One of the suggestions was Bloomer Park, which has a lot of amenities as it is, and has a lot of space, and probably the closest to us in terms of Rochester residents using that. So that was a good discussion. We talked about a, you know, we asked for an update on Avon Road going forward, because that is something that's, you know, gonna be a lot of construction. So they will present that at the next meeting. Also, we wanted to keep an update on Innovation Hills from the City of Rochester Hills. Again, a lot of our residents have been going to Innovation Hills, and it's a beautiful park. And then last, we scheduled our next meeting for April 5th, Tuesday, April 5th. So we are planning to meet quarterly going forward.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Gould or Harrison, did I, anything else you want to add?
I think you covered it well.
I'd just say, we did talk about maybe developing a shared calendar.
Oh.
Cross-pollinate some events, maybe.
What we talked about.
Yep, yep.
Nice.
Yeah, we, as, thank you, Councilmember Gould. I've always bring them a copy of our, when it's part of the consent agenda, when we're adding events, that calendar that keeps going. So we've talked about, maybe instead of bringing copies to the meeting, we, we create some sort of a virtual calendar that residents of Rochester Hills can see.
That would be great, if we could post that as well, online. Yeah, cool.
Yeah, it's great. It's been a year, over a year in the making.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
It says it's been over a year in the making. It's been requested over a year ago.
Very good, thank you. Next is a report from the Ra-Ra. Councilmember Albrecht?
Okay. Our regularly scheduled meeting of Ra-Ra was February 9th. Joe Snyder, who is the controller from the City of Rochester Hills, provided our estimated year-end budget, which we will, excuse me, year-end results of our, of how we did for calendar year 2021. Again, this is an estimate. He's estimating a profit of $110,000 for Ra-Ra, which would take the fund balance from $540,000 to six, bless you, $650,000. The fund balance of, just to remind everybody, needs to be at 20% of, of is the, is the benchmark. And we are, Mr. Snyder suggested we'll probably be somewhere in the 30% range when this is all done. Again, subject to the audit of the financials, and that will be presented at next meeting. We then talked about the bids for the 480 building. We, this, the, let me just make sure I have her name correctly. The City of Rochester Hills took the lead of that. Lisa Cummings, who works in the purchasing department, handled the RFP, which went out with everything to come back by February 10th. We received bids from six firms, which we are gonna get, we got an electronic copy of that. We'll be meeting later this week to go over those. The City of Rochester Hills will create a spreadsheet comparing the six companies, because again, each packet is 40 pages and, and all, all the information. But important things like commission, you know, what's the commission rate, is some of the things, how they're gonna market it and everything else to that. So we will meet on that in our next board meeting. The Ra-Ra Board Meeting has been delayed from the second Wednesday of March to the third Wednesday of March, because all of the Ra-Ra staff will be going to the M-Parks Annual Conference in Traverse City next week, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. In fact, I will be speaking at that conference on Monday, doing a presentation on conflict resolution for the conference. So at the next meeting, we will have a recommendation of which real estate specialists we would recommend to the full board for going forward. In terms of year-end performance, we heard from all the supervisors. And again, all the, let me just grab, I had a couple of numbers here I wanted to share with this group. We are now at, with the first results of registration program, registration participation, January of 2022 was higher than January of 2020, which was pre-COVID. So again, and I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we, we continue to be trending higher. So our program registration is, is, continues to, 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 to move forward. And we're very optimistic with our success for 2020, 2021, that 2022 will be just as strong.
What are those numbers, if I may ask?
I'm sorry?
What are the numbers?
Hold on. So 622 was January of 2022. January of 2021, which was in the middle of, of the pandemic, was 441. And January of 2020, pre-pandemic, was 604. So we've gone from 604 to 622. Councilmember Sage?
Follow-up question. So anybody on the RFP committee there, were they also on the RCS building RFP?
I'm sorry?
So, so the one for 480, you said there was somebody from Rochester Hills that was part of that RFP process. Were they also, I don't know, just, were they part of the Administration Building?
I, I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't thi, she's just quarterbacking the RFPs, going out and collecting them, coming back.
It's the city purchasing.
From Rochester.
And at the schools. Yeah.
Thank you. Not the schools. Thank you, Councilmember Albrecht. Next, we have a report from the Pink Creek Trailways Commission. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So much of the meeting was consumed by discussing the 2022 goals. And we've actually tried to separate them now to whether it's ongoing, long-term, or one to two-year. So obviously, those one-to-two-year goals have a bit more priority, because obviously, ongoing just means we're operating as we are, right? So that was, that was very productive. And, uh, do I need to submit those to the city, or I don't know?
Submit the, the goals?
Aye. I mean, we're part of the.
I mean, I think we're, Mr. Mayor, I think we communicate that in the manager's report, so everybody knows, and maybe get it on our website. More communication will be better, I would think.
Right. I wanna make a comment about those, though. Those are the goals that we need for like every commission. Those were great goals.
They're, ours are very extensive.
Yeah, they're very, very detailed, very, very well laid out. It was one of the best I've seen.
Alright, I'll submit that.
You submit it to the city manager's office, and then they can.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Oh, one other thing, if I may, Mayor. So isn't Melissa Ford on there? In your group?
Oh, she's the trail manager?
Yeah, you know, she was in the top 40/40. She made it to the top 40 of 40 at Oakland County.
She did?
Yeah, they just announced it today.
Why did you not?
Yeah, one of the top, and the, yeah, she was one of the top 40/40.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Can we recognize her then formally here, because she's?
That would be good.
Can we do that?
Next meeting, we can have.
Uh, proclamation, what?
Just listed as one of women.
Can we do that, city clerk? Thank you.
I'll find some, I'll put something together for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a report from the Downtown Development Authority. Mr. Banda is going to be giving that report tonight.
I will do that. So, Council, last Wednesday, we had a long night and two meetings. So we had our regular meeting at 6 o'clock, and we went over, I did my economic development update for them, as I did for city council. So we went over that. And then we did, John Bry had, we had spent the day with John Bry from Oakland County. We are certified again for, I think, our 17th year. And we, we're gonna have him come and make the presentation to city council in the near future. So we went over that, and we're able to, I, I informed the board that that took place again, which was, it's great. So, and John, we really talked to you about that next step. We're at this upper level. And they're gonna use this as a pilot in the country, not just in Michigan, to talk about Main Street, National Main Street's gonna create this pilot program, and it's us in Ferndale from Michigan that are gonna represent our state to do that, which is pretty cool. So there'll be a lot of teaching moments and share our information, our journey, all the way back to Main Street, makeover, et cetera, for other communities. Yeah, I think you all been almost, maybe Doug, you haven't yet, but to, um, to the convention when we kinda feel like, you know, been there, done that. But you have to remember, everybody has to start somewhere. So sharing our knowledge and our experience as a community with the fledgling communities throughout the country is always pretty invigorating, quite frankly. So John's gonna talk about that. I went over the Fourth Street, their portion of the Fourth Street reconstruction. I went over the Fourth Street, their portion of the Fourth Street reconstruction, that's gonna take place this spring. So remember, a piece of the Fourth Street project is in the DDA from the terminus of this new cement on Main Street to Walnut, and then to Pine, is part of the DDA. So their funding's already set aside that we put in their capital fund. But we wanted them, they wanted a commitment from us that they're a part of that knowledge base, so we can get with the businesses. Let the lady at Zoot and let Mark at, Mark at the back door, Tequila Place and the DeMarco's, what's going on? We made a commitment that we will finish that section way ahead of anything else. We're gonna start there, and actually, before they're even ready to pave months away, we're gonna pave that and get out of there.
Oh, good.
So we also talked to Chuck Thibodeau at the Village Shoe Inn, and he's working on his new redevelopment plan, but it probably won't be till the end of the summer. So we thought we could save a lot of money if we could stage the pipes in his parking lot, get it out of the neighborhood. It's a lot shorter than driving from the DPW, or the wastewater treatment plant with all the bulldozers and the tractors and stuff. And he's agreed to do that, and then he'll work with them to pave his lot when he's done. So we're gonna have that meeting, I think, next Monday with the community. So we're having a community meeting, creating a website, all that good stuff for Fourth Street. So we committed to the DDA to make sure we're communicating with them. And we will not bother one of their events in that period of time. We'll get out of there before they have their first event on Fourth Street. So I think they're very pleased about that. Mr. Chairman, Germanelli asked for volunteers for the budget committee, and he got his three. So they'll be meeting to formulate their goals to bring to city council soon. We did talk about the outdoor dining platforms again. Kristi, they sent out a, as I think Liz talked about, she sent out a, a survey to them saying, what do you think? Is it worth doing them again? If so, we're gonna put a dollar figure to it, come back to city council again to find out what that fee is, because now it's going up to a dollar and a quarter per hour. So we'll recalculate that, and they are in support of paying that for the platforms. And everybody except for Beyond Juice is, was in, Beyond Juice has closed permanently. But we talked to Mr. Misafeld, who owns the properties, thinks he's got a tenant, and they would love to have the platform again. So the DDA is willing to pay for those parking spots if they're gonna use them. If not, we're not gonna incur that cost. And then we went into our goals and objectives. We took a break and then went over that. And that really focused on taking the visioning session and then kind of dialing in and saying, all right, what's our short-term goals, knowing that in theory, in 2030, the DDA expires. So what do we wanna do? What can we, what do we feel we can, can ask city council, that's the seated city council, to do and not play a game of, we're looking at 2040 to accomplish something, right? So they, they're mindful of the, of that timeframe. And so they wanted to work on projects that would be able to be completed in that timeframe, number one, and then meet the goals from the visioning session, and then meld that with the community survey that we did, where we're all on the same page. And a lot of those still came back to the front porch project, a art downtown, a gathering spot for the community, a full-time farmer's market. So I can tell you that today, the site plant committee, which is Mr. LaPuma, Mr. Blumenthal, Ms. Travarro, myself, Chris Johnson, met with Mr. Rewald, who wants to talk about how do we partner and get this thing we want to do on the front porch project, but make it so we all win. Really good, really, really good meeting today. Very happy. So we're gonna try to limit our cost, get the project done, get it done now, and not wait for them to have to, you know, raise another million and a half dollars. I know, you know, they were sad, but understood the parking situation, how they, they felt good about being able to chip in and make, make that hole, because it's for, it's for the businesses. But they're trying to move beyond that now, like what's our next dollar gonna do? And what can we do with it, and defend it here and to the public? So it was a really good meeting. Went on a couple hours, and everybody got, the chairman made sure everybody in that room talked about what their vision was, what they thought, even the new members that were just, Roger Naps back on, and he kind of was like, I haven't been here a long time, but Roger, we appreciate your history. And he gave some history, and I think everybody learned together. So it was really, really a productive meeting. So I was very happy about that. So I think that's about it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Couple comments. Thank you, sir. So given the popularity of the outdoor dining platforms, let's just make that permanent. But, I mean, why would we have to do that annually? Make the suggestion to the DDA just to make it permanent? I mean, it, it is effective.
The DDA is paying for it.
No, I understand.
Right. So it's up to them.
Yeah, I think, I think they, we, excuse me, through the chair, we talked about that. And I want to put this nicely, if some people underperform, which one did the first year and didn't use it, it's a lot of money. They said we'd rather sell the deck, put the money back into our account. So they, they don't mind evaluating them each year and then coming to the city council to make recommendations.
All right, that's fine. Okay, so on the other thing, on the front porch project, please, please pass along this suggestion, if you will. Make the RCS building front porch. Have them start talking about that.
Incorporate into their project.
It meets every one of their vision statements for front porch. The only thing it doesn't meet is the dollars, so, but at least we have to talk about it. How's that?
Mayor?
And indoor farmer's market. The whole indoor farmer's market, everything.
All right. Very good. Okay, next, we see a report from the Infrastructure Committee, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Certainly, thank you. So the meeting was held February 17th via Zoom. And it really was kind of the preview of the infrastructure discussion that was held Saturday with all of council. It goals and objectives, so kind of the, the trial run, if you will. We talked about the closeout reports for Transmission Main and the South Street projects, the DWSRF water system. Happy to hear the DDA discussion continued along, because the request was made at the infrastructure meeting to make sure we coordinate Fourth Street and that improvement for this, this year, make sure we coordinate that well. We talked about the water system improvements we're looking at. And then, as council knows, we talked about, you know, where we're at with roads in terms of budget. And, you know, our three-year plan has been to do as many complete streets as possible. We've kind of gone through those, those funds to do those big projects where we do a complete street. So kind of the discussion, as was discussed Saturday, was to maybe do $400,000 to $500,000 a year of mill and fill. And for the next three years, what projects would make sense for that? From an infrastructure standpoint, that allows us to, you know, extend the life of those streets. We can't always do a complete street. We want to extend the life where we can, because it's less money to extend the life than doing the complete street. So, you know, none of those were finalized, though it needs to come back to the committee, and then, of course, it would come to council. And our next meeting is March 10th. The last ad hoc item that was brought up at infrastructure was looking at and coordinating back with the grant committee, safety enhancements for our crosswalks. So specifically where the trail crosses, you know, by the Royal Park and the library, as well as on Woodward there, where the trail crosses. Lane, city manager, mentioned he had already met with a company that has some newer technology. So just really kind of, kind of want to get that back on the radar between infrastructure and grant committee, where we have opportunities there.
Did you say that the Ludlow Crossing was on that list, too? Oh, that, that's great. Good news.
It's the hardest one to see people. So hopefully, the system that is being looked at is the one that can sense the people from a distance and start flashing.
Exactly. And it even, now it can tie into vehicles. So think about all the electronics that are being incorporated in vehicles. So it would be in your car sensing, and it would tell the driver, hey, there's a pedestrian. So a lot more discussion on that, but I, I think it's really important that we look at that.
Okay, and then one more thing, Mayor. On, on this here, so from what happened in the goals and objectives, can we just put notes that the booster station, East Side, West Side, is for East Side, West Side, over on the east side? So separate that to where it's not incorporating West Side again?
Sure.
Okay. I know no one underst, I know it had nothing to do with who put the, you know, report together here, you know, the agenda. But just for future, so everyone understands, I don't want someone to see it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a report from the Principal Shopping District. Councilmember Harrison?
Actually, Councilmember Gould took that over.
Yep, that one's me.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, we met on February 2nd at the Downtown Collaboration Studio. Great group. It was a really nice meeting, actually. It was at about 5:00, 5:30, only lasts about an hour. But we went through everything on the agenda. And one additional thing I want to mention before I talk about the agenda items, they are working on beefing up their texting service. So if there's an event going on downtown, they're really trying to get a lot of people to sign up. For example, if something has rained out temporarily, the rain stops, they want you to be able to get right back down there and, like for movies in the park and farmer's market and all that. So they're, they're gonna start pushing on, on the texting service more aggressively. The requests for recommendations, all four of them passed. I think most of you are familiar with all these. Deck Art is, is coming back. They will include approximately 50 local merchants with the goal of transforming downtown into sort of a Rochester crawl. Last year's Deck Art drew over 400 people, with artists from all over the country, Arizona, California, Kansas, Canada even. Yes, I know that's not part of our country, but. The, the Downtown Rochester will host Thursday night kickoff on May 12th and continue on Friday, May 13th from 5:00 to 9:00. And many of the stores downtown will stay open. There will be musical entertainment, kids' activities and such on Fourth Street. The next event were Thurs, was the Thursday Night Markets. They'd like to bring back, the dates of the market, Thursdays, June 2nd, 9:16, 23rd, and 30th from 5:00 to 9:00 on Fourth Street. And close Fourth Street in the morning, so they can get set up with 10-by-10 tents for folks to sell crafts and products, and whereas they're actually trying to get some live music for those events. Junk in the Trunk is back Saturday, June 18th and Saturday, August 13th. Most of you know, that's on the lot up above from where the farmer's market is, from 9:00 to 1:00. They have 75 parking spaces up there, and vendors can purchase parking spaces to sell generally-used goods from $35 for one or $50 for two spots. And finally, Movies in the Moonlight is coming back, family-friendly film festival. Saturday, and four Saturday evenings from July, on July 16th, 23rd, and 30th, and August 6th, from 6:30 to 11:30. Again, in the farmer's market parking lot, East of Third. You'll know where that is. Admission is free. Guests are encouraged to bring their seating. Show starts about 9:15, kind of pre-show stuff at about 8:30. There'll be food trucks. And the movies are Cruella, Mama Mia, Jungle Cruise, and Encanto. They have a sponsor for Cruella, the Linda Ray team. So if anybody else wants. Three, feel free. Then we talked about the events calendar. There's a lot of dates on there. I'm familiar with most of the events. I'm not sure, am I conveying those dates to somebody?
Maybe Laura.
Yeah, okay.
Or Kristy, oh, yeah.
I'll send those dates in for those proposed activities. And the rest of the conversation was really about the Fire and Ice Festival and Snowglow. And there's not much information on that. You know that Oakland County stopped supporting Fire and Ice a couple of years ago. There's not really great indication that they're looking to support it again, that we're aware of. And I do know that, that the City of Pontiac is in the hunt to get that. So we would be competing with them if it ever does, the funding ever does come back. But that's about it. And I don't know when the next meeting is, because I think I got it wrong, but I'm gonna find out.
Councilmember Albrecht.
A question, this might be for Nick or Doug. With the Thursday Night Market being those dates in June, and the street is, was that talked about? Because I know we've done the Thursday Night Market in the parking deck when the pandemic first started. So do you have a backup plan in case it does interfere with construction?
Yeah, I don't think they talked about it, but I know that they are aware of that, and I think that would be the backup plan again, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harrison?
Councilmember Albrecht, that was actually my concern as well. The Thursday Night Markets were in the Lions Park at one time, and I'm just wondering if that option's being explored at all? It seems like an underutilized space, so it's great to see activity in that area when possible.
That, that one I can speak to. That was something we talked about today. So the Lions folks have actually contacted us and a little disappointed in our maintenance of that area. So they want to get involved more. I know for a fact that the PSD talked exhaustively about that location, and it doesn't work. It just doesn't, it was terrible. And, and the, the first year was okay, next year, they just couldn't get people there. So that's why they relocated to the deck, and that really was successful. So I'm gonna, I know they, it was trial and error, and it just didn't work, because the parking, the mills got a little irritated with how much parking people were taking, even though it was mid-afternoon. So it wasn't worth the hassle, so we went to the deck. So I, I'm sure they'll focus in on the most successful place to have it, but I know it won't be there.
Okay, I would love some focus on that space.
And, and we agree, and that was one of the things we talked about in this next evolution, is how to program that space. We were at the top of the building, the Rewald building, looking down, you have no idea how big that is. It's because of the way all the trees are, that's the DDA's land. That, it's way bigger than the Little Amphitheater and the Little Gazebbo. So totally agree, great potential for programming in that area, absolutely focused.
We did that with the DDA in this, in the kid program. Remember?
Yeah, when they were doing, yes, yep, yep.
It was, was a huge area.
Yeah, so they, yeah, definitely on the radar.
So this is the first time we've ever heard this early, the movies that will be on, on the program, so let's get that out there.
I like to keep it in suspense when it was.
She wanted to keep it in suspense.
Suspense, yeah.
Oh, my.
The sponsors get it out there.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, thank you. Next, on to a report from the Rochester Area Youth Assistance Program.
I'll take that, Mayor, if I may. I'd like to say that I don't have an exact update on the Rochester Police Department's fridge, but I know that Raya has decided to support it on like one day a month. One of us has volunteered to go shopping to stock the fridge. So we've been in contact with Officer Dramer to figure out what, what's needed and when the best time to fill it is. And then we've put stickers about Raya and our services on all of the items that we stock in the fridge. So it's been a win-win, I think, for both services, this great community refrigerator that people can take from or leave food in, and then getting the word out about us and our services. So that's been a good opportunity. We are doing the Coats Scholarship again. We're actually honoring the honorees this year with a ceremony at the Calf Barn on March 22nd. There were 17 nominations, so we felt really pleased with that turnout. I'd love to invite you all to the celebration, but we're keeping it very small again this year with the COVID concerns and uncertainty around that. But we're excited to be offering a reception. We are also received a grant, $3,000 from the Rotary Club that we're very grateful for. This is helping our mental health boxes initiative, where we've basically gotten boxes and filled them with things that therapists have recommended to help start the therapy process, like fidget spinners and coloring books and things for kids to help them along in their, in their journey. And I think that's, that covers all of the highlights. Any questions?
Yes. So what are the most requested items for the fridge?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Could we, I mean, if we can get that out and.
Assistant deputy knows.
Yeah, I, if I may, so I, it's amazing to me, every, I, I see as many people, the people that come get it come pretty late at night. So when we're leaving here, we see them a lot. And, and it's like magic the next morning. And I thought it was the police department. It's the community. Every single day, and I'm not exaggerating, every single day, I see somebody pull up, and I always wonder, are they taken or going? Just curious. And they're bringing stuff, and there's, we have to actually put some other stuff in the garage, because it's, overloads the fridge and stuff. So it's literally, it's unbelievably used, stocked and used. And who would've known, right? And people are grateful. So it's, it's every, it's the stuff you use every day. There's a lot of dry goods. Yep, so there's milk, eggs. Every day, I, I know the police department goes and checks expiration dates on every single thing inside that fridge or the freezer. So it's never even close to that. Dry products on the left on the pantry, and it's everything you can imagine, from muffin mixes to mac and cheese stuff, things that you would, normal people would want to eat and, and have, then fresh fruit. people would wanna eat and, and have. Then fresh fruit and vegetables and eggs and milk, again, checked always for that. I'm a big expiration date guy, so we're pretty bad at that, so I make sure we're not here bad at that. So it's been unbelievably used, accepted, and supported. It's a, it's a really cool thing, to be honest with you.
Cool. Thank you.
I, I think it's a great opportunity to get your stickers on there and tell them there's other services that we do, because it's used so much. It's literally emptied out every day just about, so.
It's great.
It's pretty cool.
Kudos to the police department for doing that.
Absolutely.
And we do have people in need in Rochester.
We do. We do.
Absolutely. A lot.
Um, next is a report from the Historical Commission. Counselmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A very spirited, uh, discussion at the, uh, Historical Commission meeting. Um, again, to reiterate, uh, that I will every time until the actual event. Founder's Day is, uh, March twentieth, two P. M. at the CAF Barn. So that commemorates our, uh, the founding of our city, right? And this year, we're gonna have, uh, discussion on, uh, the Detroit United Railway, which, um, the commission also published a book, which I just found out yesterday, we've actually sold, uh, forty-four of those books, uh, and eight in the last month, so we got a little run on, uh, so we got some, uh, opportunity there. Um, we do need from the city, so could we get a sample receipt? So when, when we sell one up there on, uh, at the front desk, so if somebody comes in and, and wants to pay by credit card, well, we can't do that down there at, uh, the museum, but we can give them a sample receipt and say, okay, here, here's, here's how you do it. Could we, could we do that? I, I think we wanna try and get some commitment there. Um, the other question that came up, so we passed a resolution based on the city's, uh, commitment to the RCS building, right? So there have been some other entities, Rochester Avon, Historical Society, and others have passed resolutions as well. So the commission is now asking us, do, do they need to, uh, do something similar? And my question is, does that, is it, is it necessary? Do I mean, does it supersede anything we do on council? I mean, or is it blunted by the fact that we've already done that? I don't know.
I can see a stab at it, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I think anytime it's kind of like a call for action in the community, save the baby whales, more people write, the better. Write your congressman, write your representative. So I don't think it would water it down at all. I think every organization should make a statement of what they believe in and make a resolution and their reasons so that we can pass that information on to a potential seller, knowing the information of the community. So I, I don't think it supersedes or waters down. I think if you believe in it, you should pass that information on to the next person.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Good. Thank you. Next is a report from the City Beautiful Commission. Counselmember Harrison?
I wasn't able to attend, uh, this past meeting, unfortunately. I do know that they worked on their goals and objectives and put together their line items for the budget request, which we went over in Saturday's meeting. We're focusing again this year on our native plant initiatives, uh, developing our seed library at the Na- uh, the Nature Dinosaur Hill, excuse me, and, uh, looking at more additional mural opportunities.
Very good. Next is a report from the Grant Committee. Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Yeah, so the Grant Committee met February fifteenth via Zoom. You know, this committee wraps, uh, a lot of different community members and administration, um, along with our grant writer, Linda Davis Kirksey. Um, a lot of the discussion was around some upcoming deadlines to make submissions. April is a, a key date, so we're working to make some of those dates. Um, council reviewed at goals and objectives on Saturday this project list and rank ordered, uh, the projects and just gave some input to administration on priorities of which ones we should be focusing to get some grant money. Um, we also talked about the, the library is looking for, um, Bookmobile, um, grants, so we're always looking to add other grant opportunities, kind of needs and things that we're looking to do. Also noted that there is a, um, and a fund within the Community Foundation. The Community Foundation of Greater Rochester has been a partner with some other grant, uh, wins, if you will, through Rochester Hills. So kind of to work, connect through the Community Foundation to make sure that any of our Rochester grants are, um, getting that same leverage, if you will. Um, one that was brought up was, um, historic fencing or gates for the cemetery, and that is something that there is a fund at the Community Foundation. Someone has expressed an interest in that. So again, just looking to pull all these pieces together, trying to get as much grant money that we can, uh, into the city of Rochester for projects that we are looking to fund. And then one last comment on that is that we also want to make sure that we tie back into our master plan update, the grants, so that gives better leverage again to get those grants.
Very good. Um, next is a report from the Budget and Finance Committee. Counselmember Harrison, are you giving the report?
Um, yeah, I'm happy to start and have my colleagues join in if they have anything they'd like to add. I'd like to, first of all, thank administration and the rest of council for what I viewed as a very successful discussion on our budget, um, on this past Saturday. I know that this is still in the works, but I feel confident and hopeful that we are going to enter this next budget cycle, um, with a surplus. I believe it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollar surplus, and I feel that that's something we can all be proud of in our community. When we started our multi-year budgeting process, we were looking at a one point two million dollar deficit. So to come into this next fiscal year, seeing the surplus, I, I have to just recognize the efforts of our budgeting team and our administration and this council for really wise and financially responsible decisions, and especially the rebonding of our pension plan. That was the bulk of what took us from this over million dollar deficit to a surplus. And we know that we have additional changes that we'll need to make in the future, but I'm confident that, um, we're gonna be, we have the tools we need to make those right decisions. Um, another big thing coming up that we discussed on Saturday, I'll just add, is, is the roads and road funding and seeing where we have some, some deficits there. Anything that you'd like to add?
Um, no, the only thing I would add is, you know, again, we're always working to our timeline where for all of city council, we know the key dates for the budget, and I think it's important to remember when we get our, our books, our binders, April fourth through the eighth. I know for me, that's always a time when I can get into the detail and review some items, and perhaps council then would wanna have some one-on-one discussions with administration once you have the details.
Counselmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselmember Harrison, for, I agree, that I, I think the, the meeting on Saturday was productive. It got us, it moved us forward, right? So I've been through many of these processes before. Uh, some of them have been, uh, belabored. Ten meetings is way too many to do the budget, but I gotta tell you, one meeting for three or four hours doesn't cut it for me. So if I get a binder on April eighth, and then on April eleventh, I'm asked to approve the budget, I'll just tell you right now, it's no. Uh, I won't even have to read it. So I'm hopeful that we can find, uh, some time between then and now, um, to have another budget meeting, if you will, 'cause there's a lot of questions we have to, to, to talk about. Um, it, you know, I really appreciate the Budget and Finance Committee, 'cause they have, they have truly streamlined the process, and that's wonderful. But we need to be able to, as a council, the, the seven of us need to go through, um, so the one tool we have, right, that finance has, where it has all those levers that, um, pull down to the final, um, why don't, why don't we have that? What, why can't we take her with that and openly discuss that? 'Cause I gotta tell you, so this is the first time ever, ever, that we've actually said, you know what? It's cool. We're gonna pull half a million dollars out of the general fund for the next two years. We've never done that. So how is it good now? We've been ultra-conservative on our fiscal policy, and it's, and it's worked for us. So what changed? So did it change because we said, oh, okay, six point three seven five million is a good target number for, uh, the general fund? Based on what? Wasn't based on mandate, we heard that. Wasn't based on loosely on suggestion, um, but yet, okay, so where does that come from? I, I, I think we need to talk a bit more about this before we actually make a decision on the budget personally. Sorry.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Uh, well, I, I think a couple of your comments could be taken out of context. Um, I think there has been a lot of discussion, um, at a council level regarding our fund balance policy, and it is part of our annual budget process that we review that fund balance policy. Um, we did talk about it in the Budget Committee that, you know, we wanna add to that, um, matrix, some of the criteria and how the fund balance policy was established. So it's evident, because as there's changes on council, it should be right in front of people. So as an example, that is something that'll come back to the Budget Committee, um, and we can re-present it here at council. But I do think that the Budget Committee process has streamlined the budget since you've been on council in the past. You're right, council used to have ten meetings. I don't think we need to have ten meetings. The, the budget meeting does meet monthly and go through a lot of details, and we report out at council. Um, so I, I do think, and, you know, we're looking at a multi-year budget, but when we approve our budget, we are approving the one year. We have a multi-year look, but fiscally, we're approving one year. So I, I think your comment that all of a sudden we're gonna spend five hundred thousand out of our general fund is, I, I think maybe that's a bit rash.
If, if I may, yeah.
Counselmember Harrison?
Um, and we didn't make, we're talking about looking at the policy for the fund balance, but we haven't changed the policy at this, at this point.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm fine with the policy. I just wanna make it apparent for all of us, this is the first time we've ever, so we adopted a multi-year budget approach, right? When I was first on. Um, now, this is the first time ever where we say, it's good, we're gonna pull half a million dollars out of the general fund for the next two years.
Is that really the first time we've ever said that?
Yes.
I, I think we've taken money out of the general fund before.
Yeah. Do we have a finance person on?
Yep. Marcy, are you, Anthony still here?
I mean, I didn't bring my budget binder, but...
He's still there?
It looks like someone's talking or trying to talk, but they might be muted.
Hello, I'm sorry. Um, so we have removed, we have taken money from fund balance in the past. If, if you'd like, we can go in and, and pull the, the historic information and provide that, that to city council.
I would, I would enjoy that, um, because I would like to know, yes, we may have done it in a year, but have we ever projected out two years in our budgeting process to where we know we're just gonna draw from the general fund? That, that's my question.
Yeah.
For that, I'm gonna do a little research for you, uh, councilperson Sage, and, and we'll get back to you on that if we may.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I...
Counselmember Albrecht?
Um, I'm, I'm looking at the general fund review by fiscal year that we looked at on Saturday, and, um, that is, it is a multi-year budget, and we are looking multi-year. And when we looked at this three, six months ago, that number was much higher. And there are a lot of things that are gonna happen between now and twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty twenty-four, twenty-five that may reduce or eliminate the need to go into the, into the general fund. Again, I love the fact that we do a multi-year budget. It just, I like, oh, I always like looking, taking the long view on things, not just what's gonna happen tomorrow. So the fact that that number five, you know, fi- half a million dollars as you, or, uh, five hundred million dollars as you, five hundred thousand, excuse me, as you had stated earlier, um, has already come down, and based on, based on our meetings with the Budget and Finance Committee, we anticipate that'll continue to come down, uh, as we get closer to twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. For the record, what we presented, what we are looking at presenting for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, before we start playing with all the levers, is, is that we will have a balanced budget with a surplus. So I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we still have many row to hoe before we get to approval of the budget, but...
I got one more.
We're, we're looking at a three-year plan, not just this year's budget, which looks like it will be a balanced budget.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
So Counselmember Sage, I just went into my hard drive.
Okay.
The, the budget that you approved last year.
Right.
In the out years, we took four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and sixty one dollars from the general fund. Next year, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty. So it's not five hundred thousand, but we've been projecting that.
Correct. And you know why we did that? Because we knew we had money coming back. So, um, this is the first time where we don't know if we have money coming back, right? So...
Money coming back from where?
We knew there were rescue dollars. Why we positioned the budget as that. So now we don't know. There, there is no money in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four that's coming back from the, but, okay.
The inflation factor's five percent. There, there are so many levers that I, again, this conversation, I think, needs to take place at a budget workshop, which is, I know your point, which is why you wanna have it, but I, I think it should've taken place Saturday at the workshop.
So I wanna have that meeting, so let's do that. Because if you're gonna give me a binder on the eighth and ask me to approve it on the eleventh, I'm not gonna.
Where have you been looking at this calendar that has been published for eight months?
Um, I'm sorry, do you have a date certain when I'm gonna get the binder?
It's been on this, this, it's been in our packets for several months.
Nancy, please. So what day do I get the binder?
Well, I think it's, what, the fourth through the eighth?
The fourth through the eighth.
They're, they're projecting.
And then on the eleventh, you're gonna ask me to approve the budget, correct?
I'm not asking you for that, no.
The city is. So is that enough time for all of us to have digested that?
Counselmember Harrison?
I think that was the, the point of the workshop, is to go over what is in that binder, and if there's any concerns that you have now, giving us the opportunity to address them, so that way, when you get that binder, it's not, nothing in it is a surprise to you. We've hopefully already covered it in the workshop that we just had, in, in the updates that we've done throughout the year as well. I feel like every time, every month when we do this report, we're hoping to get these questions, to address any concerns that you have, and if it's not detailed enough, to add more detail for you, 'cause we wanna make sure that you're comfortable with this. Um, so that way, when you get the bu- the binder, nothing in that binder should be new information to you.
And the sooner we can get the binder, the better, of course. Well, Counselmember Peterson?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Marcy.
Oh, Marcy, did you have a comment?
I, I just had a, a quick comment. So our plan is to submit the, the budget binders on the dates that, that, uh, Mayor Protem Salvia mentioned. But the public hearing on the proposed budget will be on April twenty-fifth, and the, uh, budget presentation to council for city council adoption will be May ninth. So we still have some time in the schedule. So, um, I, I do hear you, uh, ca- So, um, I, I do hear you, Councilperson Sage, but I think, and, and I'm not opposed. I don't think any of us are opposed to an additional meeting, but I think there's still enough time in this given schedule that we wouldn't be jamming council, um, council for a, a vote.
And maybe, maybe a, a suggestion is we get the binder and then maybe at that next meeting, if there's, and it feels like there's a need to have another meeting, maybe we have the discussion then. I mean, that's a compromise idea.
Fair. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I don't know, I've been, I spent the last year talking about this, that, um, we, the seven of us are responsible for approving the budget and we all are not privy to all these conversations that are had. And we are just supposed to get the information when it's given to us, but we do not get to answer the questions or ask the questions, excuse me, um, to get us to that understanding of where everyone has come from with their, with this information that's given to us. And I really think out of every committee that we have, the budget and finance, now this budget and finance committee actually took the place of us meeting all the time. And I think that we need to go back to being able to meet together as the seven of us so we can have all these issues cleared up, questions asked and, and not have this right now. I don't think it's right. I don't think that we as a council, uh, person individually that is not on that committee has the opportunity to, uh, represent the people by not being part of these conversations. And, you know, anyone can disagree all they want to, but until you're sitting in the seat where you're not part of those conversations, it, it leaves a lot to be desired as to understanding what's being thrown at us and why you got there, how you got there and what the expectations are moving forward. So I would respectfully ask that we move forward with having all the council together to discuss the finance and the budget like we used to in the past.
I think we are where we are and I think when we get the budget books, we can decide if we need an extra meeting.
No, I want an extra meeting now. I want one to go on the books for the record so we have an opportunity to go through all of this that was just given to us. Because I feel the same way. Three hours, and by the way, we never looked at the big picture. No one talked about the bond debt. No one talked about the fire department debt, none of that. And, but we, oh, we're good to go. We're gonna do this. And then, oh, just give us your top five of the community projects or top three and send them in and then we'll work on those grants. Same thing there. When you're, when we know that we need infrastructure done, why are we not looking at, we don't even get a chance to really talk about it and we can have great conversation all together.
We talked about infrastructure. We talked about facilities.
No, you talk about the stuff, Mayor, excuse me, in the small committees with three council people.
And we talked about those on Saturday.
Yeah, after you met for 10, that Finance and Budget Committee met for 10 months.
I'm fine with meeting again.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you.
Can we, I, I ask on Saturday, so if we could just get the, the one file that finances that has all the levers.
Yeah.
Can we get that, Marcy?
That was, that was sent out to us already tonight.
It was? Okay, great. All right. So maybe that precludes a meeting if we all, but I think we might want to talk to each other, uh, based on that, because I think we're all gonna have some different opinions on the levers we would pull, uh, for future budgets. How's that?
Councilmember Harrison.
I think that's absolutely fair and I, I will say that with this tool, we didn't necessarily need to pull any of these levers because we do have a balanced budget this year and I think that's one of the reasons that we feel so confident in this, but we're happy to.
And, and I appreciate that. But this is the first year where we're comfortable with a balanced budget for this year. Whereas in the past, we've been very comfortable with a balanced budget for three years. So, yes, yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
I really think we need to get a report from that on finance because I remember feeling the same way you're feeling right now, thinking, how do we call this a balanced budget when three years out, it's not really balanced, we're using fund balance? And I thought this is kind of government thinking and I didn't like it. So I'm not disagreeing with you that, that this is a thing and I don't really like it. But what I do disagree with what you're saying is that we've never done this before. We have done this before and it's not just this past year, it's multiple years in the past. As long as I've sat on council, we have used fund balance to cover the out years.
That's where we need to start finding a way to stop using the fund balance. If we have our entities out there, rah rah and everybody else who are being held to certain standards, we are not and it's just continually spent.
Well, we are meeting the requirement in our fund balance of that, is it 20 or 30%?
It's like 32, I think.
Right, so we're even above that, which is higher.
But it's, it's, it's not a percent anymore. It was a, it's, it's a dollar amount, but it does, you're right.
We said it.
And it is higher than the recommendation from the Michigan Municipal League. So we are more conservative as a community than what's even suggested through the state.
And we saw those numbers Saturday.
Yep, we did.
What it's over and stuff.
See, and this is exactly why, no matter what, when there's four people who, and three actually sit on the committee, you cannot bring in another suggestion or anything. You are just bombarded with, no, there's a brick wall puts up with any other suggestion. So.
It's quite all right. What is the suggestion?
No matter what, if anyone has a question about anything that takes place, see, you can sit there because you sit on budget and finance, okay? And you can be defensive all you want with it, with, you know, having your answers for it. And that's not, and, and he do disrespect you, I'm just saying it in general, that when you sit on something, you have all the answers. But when someone else has a question, we're supposed to just automatically, oh, this happened then or this happened then. It's not part of it. We are not cohesive at all when it comes to budget and finance and getting everybody's opinion of the budget and finance of how to move the city forward.
Mr. Mayor, could I just make a suggestion? Can we have another budget meeting, uh, whenever it could occur?
Well, is there consensus on the council for that, for another budget meeting?
My thought is if council wants to meet, that's fine.
Okay, so I have the city manager kick out a thing to get some times for another budget meeting. Okay. Thank you.
Anything further?
Okay. Um, on for new business for refer on miscellaneous, uh, is there any other public comment? Brian.
Hello, I'm not seeing any, thank you.
Okay. Um, receipt of the check register report and the city manager update.
Yep, so it looks like we have a check register for 217 and 223 in your packet. Uh, Mr. Wing had said if, if he had anything he brought to the meeting, he didn't let me know. So I don't think there's anything additional from the manager.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor, I did have a question about, um, something on the check register. Maybe I'll just ask it offline. I just, there was a lot in this one and I, there's, it's really not clear. I know that they were working on a program that, to make it really clear, like what some of this stuff is really for, because it doesn't say that. And I know that the program itself can't do certain things. So, um, just like to know in the future if we can get a little more detail.
I think Marcy stole us in. Yep, I'm sure that's not a problem, yeah.
I know, it's just something to do with this, way this prints off.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anything tonight?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Gould?
Uh, nothing, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Uh, yes, I have a few things. Um, I, at Saturday's meeting, we had a, um, about 20, maybe 30-minute, uh, presentation on the Gov HR compensation report. And I think the plan was to bring it to our next council meeting and vote on it during that meeting. And, um, my request to city administration is that, and I will be going through that report tooth and nail with my background, but I can't share with the city council, you know, uh, my thoughts. So my, my feeling would be that I would request that we go into a closed session at the next meeting to discuss some of the specific salaries of people, uh, based on some of the things. I will send my thoughts to city manager Wing on, um, the different parts of the Gov HR, uh, recommendations and where my position is at, on, on them and how he wants to share that with the rest of council is, is fine. Um, I just want to follow the Open Meetings Act, but I think when we get into next meeting, there will be some discussion based on what I'm looking at on certain names and people. And I'd like, I'd request that that go into closed session.
Yeah, I, we were talking about doing that. Mr. City Attorney?
Well, the, the only way to do that would be if it was being considered a, um, periodic evaluation.
Correct.
So I can kind of see, I can talk to you as far as what it is that you're trying to discuss, to see if that would fall under a periodic evaluation. But then you get into, that employee would have to actually request it to be in closed session.
I, I guess, uh, the city attorney is that we had on a spreadsheet that we received on Saturday, all of us got it for the first time, a person's name with a recommended increase. If I disagree with that increase, thinking it should be higher or lower, how can I present that in an open session, public session, which would be embarrassing to that person? So I'm trying to do it in closed session to protect, to respect that person's salary and, and discussion. And there's, there's some recommendations for different, different adjustments that, you know.
Yeah, that, that's, that's one of the, uh, I would say the problems with Open Meetings Act, because that's, those, those, those conversations, unfortunately, most of those have to be out and open, as uncomfortable as they are. Um, and, and that's what, you know, employees know that as far as being an amicable employee, that, that, you know, their, their life is, is, you know, their, you know, unless it's a particular evaluation.
Okay.
Of them and they request it to go, um, then that's really the only way to go into. Otherwise, it's just an uncomfortable open meeting discussion.
Then my, my hope will be then that I will, again, it's just gonna be my opinion that I will give to the city manager and he can then push that back out to, uh, my fellow, fellow council members in advance of the meeting. So, you know, and, and I'm, I would think the other, my other six peers on city council might also have opinions that are gonna go into city manager Wing that he needs to then look at. Again, we just got this on Saturday. It's a big, you know, 144 pages or what have you, and there's a lot of different parts on it that all of us are gonna have an opinion on. I just, with my HR background, I'm gonna really deep dive into this, uh, and, and send my thoughts to, to city manager Wing. So if it has to be in the open part of the meeting, so be it. I'll follow, you know, your, your guidance on that. But that's was sort of my justification for making this recommendation.
Mayor Protem Salvia, you got a comment?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to add on that. I'm glad you brought that up because, you know, I was wanting to make in a comment that I think we need to have more discussion on the compensation study and really questioning administration, kind of what is our expected process around this, you know? You know, there's a lot of information there on benefits, you know, vacation time, you know, it's not just wages. It's, it's the whole package of compensation. And, and in general, is this, this, to me, it's a data point. So what is the process that we expect to do with this data point? Are we doing nothing with it? Are we using some of it? So that process is really my question and looking for more discussion with council on that.
Yeah, Mr. City Attorney, wasn't the city manager gonna present some of it in closed session because it had to do with union negotiations and things?
I, I, I was not part of that discussion, so.
I think that's, I think.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm in agreement with both, uh, Councilmember Albrecht and Mayor Protem Salvia. We do need to have another discussion regarding this, because we didn't go into closed session, um, when we discussed this on Saturday. So let's have another Saturday. And we can do maybe the budget and this at the same time. Let's openly talk about it so it's an open meeting. And, and, you know, we can all talk about what, uh, our concerns are. Because I agree with you, 20 minutes.
Well, I, I think that was clear that we were not discussing that.
Okay.
I guess the plan was, um, that we were gonna present it at, what I heard on Saturday is it's gonna be presented and voted on at the March 14th meeting. And I think I'm not gonna be ready for that at the March 14th meeting. We can talk about it at the March 14th meeting, talk about it again at the March 28th meeting. I just don't want to have a burning platform that we have to make a decision on March 14th. I think this is too, too important. We're talking about, you know, making sure our, our, our employees are paid competitively, especially in the market we're in right now. So I don't, I don't want to fast-track this in such a way that it jeopardizes us making the right decision.
Agreed.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, and thank you. And to Mayor Protem Salvia's point though, as well, we do need a policy for this because to go into and actually approve the budget, we do need to know what we're looking at for the year ahead, if we're going to be giving raises. But there was also, that was a two-part, um, discussion regarding, one had to do with the wage and compensation and then the other had to do with the, uh, cost of living and that. So I, I think it's very important that we really have a discussion on that.
Right, but I think the city manager, I think, or Marcy can, was that they factored some raise, some bigger raise, some higher raise into the budget process already? Is that, is that correct? Yeah.
Then, well, I still have the floor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm looking, you know, I, at the last meeting, I suggested that we need to get back to whatever normal was before COVID and I'm glad that we're sitting here, uh, in, in this setup. I'm disappointed in how the room is set up. Uh, I think it's, does not reflect the decorum of a city council meeting. I think we need to, the procedure for hybrid public meetings needs to stop. I think we need to get back to having normal meetings again in here so people can attend. And we can have seats set up here, not just tables, hodgepodge the way it is. I was, I was really disappointed when I came in here and I'd like to rethink, do we need, when we, you know, I'm looking at the first page of our packet, that, the public packet, which is procedure for hybrid public meeting. The city has begun in-person public meetings as of June 1st, 2021. And it goes on to talking about, uh, um, you know, there's limited in-person attendance seating available with COVID-19 procedures in place. And I know we're in a transition period of going to no masks and by the end of the month, no masks in schools and things of that sort. So I just want to know when we're gonna get back to the, the days of when city council, the, the, this room, which we just remodeled, you know, uh, is, is set up the way it is so that we can have our, our meetings and we can have public attending again, instead of just, you know, looking at a screen and having people talk, talk via Zoom. That's it, Mayor.
Did you want to talk about the?
I, I, I misread it. It's, it's supposed to be on the next, the, the March 14th. I was ready to talk about it, but, uh, I'll, I'll, it's, it's for the March 14th agenda.
Very good. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Nothing else.
Councilmember Sage?
Uh, just one thing. So at the last meeting, we actually talked about the lighting ordinance and there was a possible path to incorporate what the planning commission wasn't comfortable with, but back into the general code, right? So you're looking for direction. I will make a motion now to incorporate what we've already debated and approved as an ordinance to find its place in the general code. And I'm looking for support from this council.
Mr. City Attorney, is that?
Sure. As, as the city council knows, I did, um, put together some language to consider. And so if that is a, is a starting point for city council to, to take a look at, it, it can easily be in the next city council as an agenda item to, to consider, for sure.
Very good. Do I need to make a motion to put it on the agenda?
I, I don't think so. I think the.
Listed to be discussed.
So just put it on the next agenda?
Yep.
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. A couple of things from me, Mayor. First, uh, to Councilmember Albrecht's point, I am excited to see, uh, an audience member here tonight. I'd love to see more audience members. I think the room should be set up appropriately for that. Just to respectfully disagree, I do love the hybrid option because it gives more access, I think, to people. Just to respectfully disagree, I do love the hybrid option because it gives more access, I think, to people. So I like seeing people on the screen, and I like just increasing the access. You can be from anywhere and still make a public comment. So I do like that aspect of it, I just wanted to note that. And now I'd like to ask for a favor. I'd like to please request an excused absence for the February 14th meeting that I missed.
Motion for Amanda Harrison to have an excused absence for.
Support. Motion by the mayor Protem, support by councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. And just one last thing that I wanted to comment on. I had a very small incident at my home, and I called our Rochester Police Department because I just had some questions. And I wasn't expecting anyone to come out, it wasn't that important. But Officer Hoag did come to my home, she was there in like five minutes. She came in and chatted with me, addressed all my concerns, followed up with me the next day. And I just wanted to say how much I appreciated Officer Hoag and the Rochester Police Department for really being our hometown, hometown heroes, here to always help and, you know, be on the lookout. I just really appreciated that.
Very good. Councilmember Peterson?
Nothing, thank you.
I just have a couple things. One, I just wanted to thank everybody for their Saturday participation. We made some progress. And we'll make more progress. So again, thank you for everybody's Saturday. And I just want to give a little shout out for the upcoming Rochester Chamber Outlook Breakfast coming up on the 14th. I think the city will have a table, so everyone on the council is invited. And we are going to have a press conference in the morning. And we're going to have a gag reel that has already been shot. And I will give a little preview is, I will say two words, Peaky Blinders. That's all I will say. And so I hope everybody can attend, it should be a good event. And again, it's kind of the first coming out of COVID, so hopefully that will be a big event.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to, I guess, comment more on the wage issue. The caveat to what I'd said is if it would be considered union negotiations, that that is an opportunity to go into closed session. So if, your question kind of reminded me of, if it's union, that can go from the union negotiations. So there's probably some blending, is my guess. But if it falls under the union negotiations, then that can go into closed session.
Thank you.
And I think in my conversations with the city manager, that was what he was going to go into closed session to talk about because there's, you know, if we give, what we give the non-union people is going to affect what we give the union people and things like that. I think so. Without further ado, thank you everybody tonight, and meeting adjourned.